Special joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee to order for November seventeenth at six P. M. Roll call, please.
For the City Council, Zazada.
Here.
Larson. Smith.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker. Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Okay, Finance Advisory Committee, Bad.
Here.
Calligan.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Olinger.
Here.
Perkins.
So just for the record, Alderman Walker reached out to me and Committee Member Perkins that they would not be here tonight. All right, let me mute that. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Carlson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Public Participation. We have one. We have the Executive Director of Opportunity Decalb, Mr. Chad Glover. Come on up, Chad. As a reminder, you have three minutes, sir. I'm sorry. I've got to hold you to it. Okay. Thank you.
I'll stay with them. No problem. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the Finance Advisory Committee, city staff. As the mayor mentioned, my name's Chad Glover. I'm actually here tonight representing two organizations. One, Opportunity Decalb, which is a nonprofit community development corporation that was formed to work in collaboration with others to achieve the goals of the Antiglidd North Revitalization Plan. The creation of our organization is actually explicitly called for in the city's comprehensive plan. I'm also here representing Breakthrough Business, which is a developing regional entrepreneurship support organization that's currently supporting entrepreneurs from DeKalb, Sycamore, Shabana, and Genoa, and we expect an increasing number of communities this spring. Our cohort and our signature program, the Breakthrough Community Business Academy, is actually meeting tonight across town on the NIU campus, and they're covering legal issues. So the NIU Law School is actually presenting to them tonight. I do have a few members of our board here tonight. I just want to appreciate their attendance with me. Melissa Medio, Norm Walzer, Bart Sharp, and Gip Seaver. So I'm here tonight first to express, as we have in the past, our gratitude for the leadership of the mayor and the council in supporting the work that we've been doing the last couple of years. The investment the city has made in our work has been catalytic and has really allowed us to move the ball forward and continue the momentum, not just in the Antiglidd North area, but across the city with the entrepreneurs that we're serving. Of course, over the summer, I came and made a full presentation to the council and how those investment dollars were used in the first couple of years, and outlining our hope that the city would continue to reinvest in our organization on a continuing basis moving forward. So fast forward, again, we know at the point of the year you're in now, you're making budget decisions for next year. And while the funding that you provided to us is a relatively small part of the budget that you have to deal with and discuss tonight, it is very important to our organization to be able to continue to advance the work that we're doing in the community. So we're just here to follow and listen to tonight's discussion. We appreciate that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. And City Manager, would you mind when we... or that point in the budget?
I've got it.
Bring that up and talk some about it? Okay, perfect. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Consideration of the Proposed FY 2026 Budget. Do I have a motion and a second to bring that to the floor, or can we just talk about it?
So moved.
Moved, all right. Perfect. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager, now we're really official.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And to the folks at home. This is a climax of sorts of a number of public meetings that we've had, a lot of staff work that has gone into preparing what you have before you tonight. And it comes not without a few omissions and errors. And I thank those of you who've contacted me and passed along a few things, and I will make note of a few as we go through the evening. I am not, as I have at some times in the past, going...I'm not going to go through every page of the budget. When we last met with the Finance Advisory Committee in October, and there were a couple of members of the council there, we had eighteen pages in front of you, plus about an equal number of spreadsheets. And we talked a lot about the general fund, a little about the water fund, and spent some time talking about structural issues that control how much we can spend annually on streets and vehicle replacements and so forth. And your guidance was helpful in preparing this final document. But we've got three hundred and forty pages before you now, and a little less than half of that is constituted by narratives, and there are a whole lot of numbers and spreadsheets in here. So if along the way, you're aware of some errors...I have to admit, even though this is a part of my routine from January through December, as it gets very intense in these last couple of months every year, I get blurry-eyed. So I'm probably staring at numbers, but I'm not sucking them in. Okay.
I think we can give you a little bit of grace with the three hundred and fifty-four pages. And also, if you don't mind, City Managers, since there are three hundred and fifty-four pages, more often than not, let us know what page you're on.
I will.
Because you've been looking at this. I think you have them all memorized. So it helps us follow along.
I will do that, and we'll kind of click on through. I'm not going to dwell on anything unless you say, Bill, let's dig in a little bit. So the general fund, as we've talked year in and year out, and in this season, as we've talked in the last couple of months, is probably the fund directly or indirectly that most of our residents are familiar with because it has our key operating departments. Not all of them. Water Fund supports another key operating group of departments. But this is a pleasure, actually, because the people sitting here tonight who were just looking forward to the opportunity to come here tonight are all very much involved in those operations, and they give it everything they have every week. And I'm very grateful for their collaboration. So let's jump into the general fund. And there is a narrative in the beginning which really hasn't changed. There's a transmittal from the City Manager, which, except for a few modest changes in the narrative, is essentially what you saw. That was the first eighteen pages that you saw at your last gathering. So if you have any questions about that overview, please let me know. We do this purposely so that somebody who asked to look at the city budget or goes online, and this is all available online on our website, and wants some kind of executive summary, that's what this is. So it covers most everything, but not everything. Any questions about the overall summary that I presented to you at this point? Okay. There's also a chapter in here. It's called "The Community We Serve." There are some details here about our town, some of the demographics of the town, the system of government we have, the employment, the largest employers, some planning that's been going on in recent years, and what some of the results of that planning may be, and whether it's aligned with the reality in certain areas. And then we have an overview of the budget in a lot of more detailed narrative and numerical pages, lots of nice charts and graphs showing you over the previous three or four years, bar graphs especially, all over the place.
Bless you.
Bless you. And then also a brief summary of our key financial policies. In more detail, you'll find the same policies in the back that will guide you through what our budget is. And so if you have some questions about that, we can talk about it. I did want to mention a couple of things before we leave the general fund, and I do want to get to what Chad presented earlier. I'm just going to go a little deeper here. You have at your desk a kind of a...it's a spreadsheet, another spreadsheet. But what this looks at is the general fund balance as it supports different activities through the year, and more specifically as is projected to support certain activities and purchases in 2026. Because we've had some discussion here in other forums, other nights, and maybe some tonight, about how we should...what we should do about our general fund reserve, which is solid, and we have been using this in recent years for helping with street maintenance, helping with the purchase of vehicles. It has, since 2012, been used to help with offsetting some of our state pension costs. I break down how it looks for '26, for the year coming up. For my general fund reserve, we are on the street maintenance side, going to bring 1.4 million out of the general fund reserve. That's over and above whatever the standard revenues are going to be. Also, from the same reserve, we are going to be helping with equipment and vehicle purchases to the tune of about 540,000. Then how we're going to cover shortfalls in our state pension payments with respect to what we are asking of our constituents in the way of a levy for either the fire or the police pension. That's just a little under 1.9 million, over and above what our levies are. And then there's another thing, and we lose track of this sometimes. Next Monday night, the council will have a chance to vote on second reading on an abatement ordinance. So we levy to make sure that the state and the county know that we're looking to pay certain things. But we tend to abate some of those levies, and we've always abated all of our general debt service, our general obligation bonds. And that, in 2026, comes to a payout through the year for these bonds and interest of a little over 2.3 million. So when you add all those up, you've got the roads and the equipment and pension payments and the GO debt service, and you get $6,164,460. Now, I know you don't expect me to produce that in a surplus for you every year. Well, maybe you would, but we've had some pretty good years. And last year, we...twenty-four, which is the one that we know now closed anyway, the most recent one closed, we came up with about three and a half million. So how do we pay for the rest of this? Well, years ago, I thought it was clever to put how much is actually going out toward our pension payments and just stack that all in our general fund support budget. So you can see it, boom, right there. The auditors disagreed. They wanted us to show that we're paying that really on a department level and by department for those people who are affected, police and fire. And so you see smaller numbers spread across many more pages, and there isn't a place where you add it up, except when somebody like me says, here it is. But in any case, here it is. And so that's a lot of money. Now, there are other taxing bodies that do ask taxpayers to pay for that debt service. We don't. We have it for a long time, a generation or more. And I'm not proposing that we do. But it's just to point out that we're not shirking ways whereby we could use that general fund reserve constructively. We're doing it. That's a lot of money. So that's over 6 million out of 55 million. Every year, we're just dipping into our savings, if you will, and throwing it out there. Now, that's not sustainable over a long period of time, but we're doing it now because the alternative is worse, not getting streets done, not paying our debt service, not paying for our fiduciary obligation with bonds. So just put that in your budget book and keep it in case somebody asks you, where does that money go? Okay, a couple of other things on the general fund. There are some pages at your desk. As I was going through the budget over the weekend, I noticed there are summary pages that we put in some of the bigger departments. We don't do it with the Administration Department. We also don't do it with Community Development, but bigger numbers. So we've been summarizing all the different subunits in the police, fire, and public works, and the totals are there for you, for your reference. Okay. One thing that I'm proud that we do every year is we try to support not-for-profits, and this is a year I don't have to tell you, particularly at this point in the year, there are a lot of not-for-profits looking for some assistance. And there is a $300,000 budget in the Community Development Department's line items that goes to our Human Services grants. And then we also have a CDBG program, which is a whole different fund, which comes up with about 400,000 every year. We get that from the federal government. The 300,000, though, comes just from our various local sources, sales taxes, and the like. And there is a proposal before you tonight. Chad repeated it tonight, and all of you have received some information by email. There is a proposal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, but it was for $30,000 for...in 2026. And if we could consider that as part of the budget process, which is where we are right now. So I'd like to hear, I guess, some guidance from the council on this. If the council wanted to fund all or a part of that on a...at least for '26 in the same way that we are funding other recurring obligations to DCDC, the Chamber, and the CVB, then that's one place we could take it out of the budget. In this case, there's nothing set aside in this budget yet because there hasn't been guidance on that. But tonight, if you want to guide me on an actual amount, there are a couple of places we can do that. One...there are several in the general fund. There's also the Emergency Assistance Fund, which is Fund 150, we set up two years ago to deal with that crazy system that we were thinking we might be...might have to deal with, where buses were coming from Texas and dropping migrants from...or from the southwest into major North American cities. And we never had to do anything about that in terms of payouts in the last couple of budget years. So there's still the same 50,000 in there. This is another important use for local purposes, and that's up to you.
So for...I'll kick off the conversation. If I recall, it was two years ago, we contributed $125,000 to Opportunity Calb for this particular program. Now, it's the spin-off, I'm going to say, is Breakthrough Decalb. So Breakthrough Decalb is the program for entrepreneurship that we originally contributed, like the 125 for. Is that accurate, Chad? You can come up to the mic, yeah, please.
So when you provided the 125, that was to help us set up the Breakthrough Community Business Academy?
Yep.
So now what's spinning off is an entrepreneurship support organization called Breakthrough Business.
Okay.
So when I sent you the email with the background, the one-pager, that outlines the multiple aspects of Breakthrough Business. So the academy is the first piece. That's a twelve-week program. And then there's what we call Business Assistance Services, which is two years of support for the entrepreneurs after they come out of the academy. A lot of that is coordinating partnerships. So for example, a lot of our entrepreneurs who come through the academy have gotten memberships in the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, are availing themselves to services from the SPD, C, things of that nature. The third key component is capital. So we know in all the examples we've studied, as you're developing a business, you need access to capital at some point when you're developing the business. Many of the entrepreneurs we're serving, keep in mind, at least 75% of each cohort are people from low to moderate income backgrounds, in many cases, very low-income backgrounds. So they don't have friends and family capital. They don't have other capital they can access. We know there's gaps that have to be filled, so we have to figure that out. We also think down the road, again, the examples that we've studied, what this can lead to after a few years is property redevelopment, that where the entrepreneurs who are going through the program end up setting up businesses in properties that can be redeveloped. So that's sort of a long-term plan. So the difference between now and two years ago is we started with the Business Academy. Now we're developing out a whole...kind of a whole organization, again, model after successes in other communities, for how to really make a difference with this.
So the 125 was, I would say, a catalyst for a lot of what Chad's asking for right now, which I'm particularly very proud that we stepped up and were able to provide that funding. You know, going forward, I'm definitely open to making a contribution. I like City Manager Nicholas's idea of the migrant aid fund that we had, since we're not seeing any of that. Those are funds that are sitting there that could be utilized right now, boots on the ground, to see a return on those dollars. I'd be open to something like that. My challenge would be for this year, and then after that, I'd love to see more and more organizations. And I know, Chad, you would report on that, starting to step up, other communities in the county especially stepping up with that, because this doesn't just affect the city of DeKalb. This affects the county in general. So for me, that's kind of where I sit on this. But I'm curious about, council, how we feel about continuing contributions to the Breakthrough Business. Alderman Zazada?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm trying to find a reference in our book.
It's not in the budget.
Okay.
This would have been emails that he sent to us before.
Gotcha.
And he's made a presentation to council in the past regarding
Sure, sure.
continuous support from the city of DeKalb.
And so...
So this is a one-off ask that isn't part of the budget right now.
And so I guess what I would be thinking of in a more holistic way would be, I would imagine this money otherwise would go into our general support for other nonprofits and such. So I guess that's the list I would be imagining to look at, just so that I could see, okay, how much are we giving to all these other organizations?
Calling.
Yes, Chair Neely.
I didn't receive anything, any briefing at all about this. And Linda didn't, and I don't know about...
I don't think any of you did. This is a...
Oh, okay.
It was a previous ask before council that hasn't made it into the budget, that Chad is reminding us.
Okay, so it was new, what, one-page briefing, right?
Not to the Finance Advisory Commission, no. But Council, Chad has spoke to us before on this topic, has sent us multiple documentation on it. And I know all of us, we get so much stuff. I don't expect councils sitting here to recall everything that was proposed. Alderman Zazada, I mean, I assume you're talking to the CDBG money and the Human Resource Commission or...sorry, the human resources funding that we do. I don't think that list is in the budget. I see too many documents.
The Human Resource Program is on page 151, if you look at your budget.
Thank you.
And you look under Contractual Services, which is the big category there, and you see Human and Social Services. That's 300,000. That's what's in the budget for this year. This is not included in that. It's not included in that. However, to put a fine point on this, if I may.
Yes, please.
So City Managers are supposed to have little things here and there. There is a little thing here in this budget to the tune of about $20,000. And if you were to support this, I think for the first year to see how it goes, this is the budget where you...this is the unit, Community Development Unit, where it should come from, and should not be competing with the Human Social Services, but under Developmental Services, there's 20,000 in there. This is even before we talked about the possibility of 250,000 for DeKalb 250 and some of these other things. But I'd be foolish if I didn't have some place so when the council...something comes up that we found a place to fund it. So there is 20 there right now. It's not claimed.
Okay.
Of course, it's not even January 1st yet, but this is the first claim.
Right.
And I would recommend this is where it comes from.
Alderman Verbic.
So then is that 20,000 available every year, then?
No, that'd be up to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess if I look at Fund 150, do we need to keep a balance in Fund 150?
It's your call, too.
Right. So if that's 50,000, we don't need to keep a balance there. There's 30 for this, and then council on the other 20. Alderwoman Zazada, I like your idea of...but again, if it's developmental money, then...
That's what this...so this is a little different than just supporting like the year-in-year-out menu. I realize it changes as conditions change, but each social service agency has their own. But this is not a social service agency.
Right.
So this is really developmental because we're developing
Right.
new businesses, entrepreneurial businesses. So I think it's...it does fit in that developmental way.
And as far as the social services go, we've also developed an application process.
Yes.
Right? So, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think I'm thrilled that they're here today, and I see the development aspect of it. I see that we're in...if we were to support this, we'd be investing in individuals in the community who would be then turning those dollars over back into the community. So
That is a thought, yeah.
I can see supporting to the tune of the full 50K and then have that 20K still aside. Am I understanding that right?
No.
No.
I'm sorry. There's $50,000 available for...that's in the migrant fund right now that hasn't been utilized.
And it's called the Emergency Assistance Fund.
Yes.
And I wouldn't put it...may I make a suggestion?
Of course.
20,000 from the Developmental Services. That's not claimed. The 50,000, rather than pecking into that, you know, we had a presentation by a former alderperson here was the last meeting. The food banks in our area are really straining to provide food and nutrition for our people...some people in our community. So that's emergency assistance, if there is any. And that's about as fundamental as it gets. So my suggestion would be that we maybe repurpose that or talk...have a conversation about it, put it up as a consideration. Let's talk about what we feel is the emergency...
The 50K, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just pocket that for now.
On an on-demand basis, potentially based off of needs that arise in the community. I like that. So you're saying the 20,000 is what you'd recommend
Yes.
that we could contribute to Breakthrough. The 50,000, let's just keep that in reserve for emergencies that might come up over
Right.
the period of 2026.
Okay.
Seeing heads nod, I'm not seeing them nod confidently.
Yeah, I agree.
Alderman Smith?
I guess I'm going to ask the question. I mean, we seem to be funding all the programs city of DeKalb. I...like the mayor said, you know, other...we have a lot of cities in the county that we, I think, should be contributing to some of our resources from all of our not-for-profits that are not. I don't know how council feels about that, but we seem to be the ones always, you know, people like Chad and his group, who I truly support, are coming to us. Is it time to...I don't know if I even want to say restrict it to our DeKalb residents? Have we got to that point? I mean, we have a lot of places that we are providing services, whether it be Hope Haven, Elder Services, to the entire residents of the county. But our DeKalb seems to be carrying the balance, if you will, of the funding.
I think your main point is correct. We are funding a lot. There are different options for policy. One is restricted to local, but that's very hard to do at the point of contact, you know, you, but not you and you, you know. So...but there might be a way within the that Emergency Assistance Fund where, with a little bit of creative thinking, we can set up a system that...and actually appeal to our...everybody who's elected and appointed here can appeal to our counterparts to see what...and we can also find out more information from the agencies we serve about, you know, what kind of assistance are they getting from other parts of the county.
Well, this was...I've been approached on this of why, you know, why we seem to be, I guess, honestly, just footing the bill.
I agree.
You know, for these extremely important...or don't get me wrong, I have the utmost respect for Elder Services, TARA, and Hope Haven. They've been around a long time, and they've always, you know, come through for us. Those are just two, family service agencies and other. I don't know. It just may be some point of conversation that I'm glad we are in a position to help, but how much more... but how much more, you know, should we be? I don't know. I know I'm walking, I feel like I'm walking myself into a hole, but, you know, honestly. So that's how I feel. And I'm not the one that, I actually, someone brought this up in conversation to me, and I thought, that's kind of an interesting idea, that we seem to be carrying the weight, if you will. And I'm glad we can, but how long, you know, do we continue to dip into our reserves to continue this, when I've got people screaming about their alleys and roadways? So anyway.
Actually, Alderman Smith, I love this idea, and maybe you could help me. You know, we do a taxing summit, where we bring in all the taxing bodies in the city of DeKalb. Maybe we hold another summit, where we bring in the municipalities in the county to have a conversation about Hope Haven, Safe Passage, Family Service Agency, to get a clearer understanding of the contributions that everyone else is making, and even seeing it by a per capita basis. Is everyone leaning in? Because a lot of the services we're providing, now obviously, we're the largest municipality out there, so we're going to have a majority of them, totally understand. But ultimately, people are coming to DeKalb, city of DeKalb, because those county-based organizations are here. So I think it'd be really worthwhile having a conversation with these other municipalities. I agree with you 100%. And maybe the $50,000 that City Manager is talking about could be, if we dish those out, maybe those at that time, we could look at it being more targeted and restricted to city of DeKalb residents, potentially.
I'm on board.
I know the City Manager is right, sorry, it's Alderman Carlson, talking with like Family Service Agency and some of these organizations, in the weeds, trying to make sure a dollar went to, it can be difficult, which I know you can appreciate in your role. But that's something I think we should talk about, and I think we should be more assertive on, we need help. It can't just be the city of DeKalb here shouldering the burden for the county. The county should be helping. And I mean, I don't mean the DeKalb County Government.
Correct.
I mean, all the municipalities. Alderman Carlson.
I just wanted to say, Alderman Smith, I'll join you in that hole. Because I, a bunch of people have come up to me in the fourth ward, and they say it very direct of, we have all these services, Safe Passage, Hope Haven, and people from Malta, Genoa, Sycamore, everyone's using it. And they actually get very upfront of, why does Sycamore get high V? And we have to pay for all their services, the money from the grocery tax. It all comes back. So I'm 100% with you, if maybe there's a way to look at past usage by the different counties, and then a fee or that percentage they pay. I don't know either, but I'm with you on this.
At least we can encourage them. So what, to wrap this up, so we can move on, because I know City Manager has 354 pages he wants to get through. What I'm hearing is support that he could put into the budget for us coming forward for 20 grand for a breakthrough. The 50 grand, we're going to leave aside for emergency situations over 2026. That individually will get brought before council, and we can discuss how those funds are used? I'm seeing, yes, Alderman Verberk?
For DeKalb residents?
Yes, that's, yes, okay.
Yeah.
Because all of our agencies report
Right.
to us regularly, how many residents are from DeKalb, so on and so forth. So I would believe that each of them could come up with that granular information of where are their clients from? They have identification, they report where they're from, so it should be pretty straightforward.
We can figure out how to put some guardrails on it, and that can be a discussion we have at council when those issues are brought up. Just realize sometimes when you're providing dollars, to carve out this dollar specifically went to a DeKalb resident, might just mean that dollar that was going to go there anyway just went over to a Sycamore resident. So, but we have to trust in our individual organizations that they know the intent of the dollars, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that intent is executed on their end, absolutely.
And then we help fund administrative overhead, based on how many DeKalb clients there are. So whatever, whatever organization that is, we should be contributing to overheads, and not just the support for the individual, but also the overhead for the organization.
All right, City Manager, you got what you need?
I do. We'll make some changes, a little bit in the narrative, a little bit in the spreadsheets. The budget hearing is next Monday, and that goes out Thursday.
Okay.
So between now and then, we will change as you've directed.
Yep. Finance Committee, sorry for the deviation here. I know you weren't in the loop on this, but I'm glad we were able to work it out. Opportunity to DeKalb, know that what we're talking about is $20,000 that we are definitely willing to do and will execute on. And with that, you don't have to stay for the rest of this conversation. You're more than welcome to leave. Really appreciate you all coming out and supporting a great organization here in the city of DeKalb.
Thanks, all.
All right, City Manager, it's your show.
Well, I've said all I want to say about the general fund, but if you want to talk some more about it, what are your questions at this point?
I don't know if the Finance Committee has any. Oh, Alderman Verberk?
City Manager, I would just say, thank you. This is excellent information, and really helps a lot.
You're here.
Yeah, I mean, your budget is, and when I say "your," I'm looking at all of you. Your budget's amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, to read it, to understand it, the comparisons here over here, it's just absolutely phenomenal. Makes, I think, our jobs really easy from a comprehension standpoint, so thank you.
Well, I'm going to say, thank you for that. But I'm going to say, I think that's our obligation.
I know.
And so many governments don't explain the pages and pages, and books and books, of spreadsheets and things. And I think at the local level, we have the opportunity to do it, it's more within our grasp, and I think that's what people need to see. And if a constituent ever says, I don't know what you're spending the money on, whatever, they can just go to our website and see this, and, you know, pick your own topic, figure it out.
And I hear it's your obligation, but you actually execute on it, which is, from this end of the things, is just wonderful to have that in our hands.
Thanks.
So you just want questions on the general fund?
If you have them, otherwise I'm going to go to the special revenue funds.
Anything from you all?
Anything? Okay.
Continue, sir.
All right, let's roll. If you look on page 155, so we're done with the general fund, so 154, so a little bit more than half of the budget is general fund detail. So we're at page 155, and you can see the, more than a dozen special funds. Some of these larger than others. By their title, they tend to tell you a lot about them, and we have talked about some of them. Some of them you're not that familiar with, such as our special service area budgets, and we put them all in here because they don't fit into any other box, really. So one of the biggest of all is the transportation budget, and I'm going to go to that unless you want me to talk. We've talked a little bit about the emergency assistance program, the GEM-T, obviously. We've talked about that in the past. It's a, it's a fund which we use for capital purchases by the fire department. That's what it's set up to do. It's actually based on funds that are reimbursement for us between, to cover the gap between what persons are expected to pay, and what the insurance might be willing to pay. And for many years, we were getting 50 bucks on a $1,800 bill. Now we're getting most of the difference, not all of it, but we're getting a lot of. And that's for ambulance rides for persons who are on Medicaid. So it's not everybody that we give EMS service to, through our ambulance service. Okay. But transportation, I think it's important to note at this point that 2026 will be an important year. For the first time ever, we're going to invest in some facilities where maintenance and operations can occur on our buses. And Alderman Verberk was very, very appropriate in recommending that, as we start talking about this facility, we stop talking about it as a transit center, because most people, when they hear that, are thinking about big cities where a train, or a bus, or a underground drops you at a center, either on your way to some other place, or you're downtown, so there you are. This doesn't drop our riders anywhere. This is where the buses start in the morning, cleaned up, fueled up, ready to go, and then they, they hit their routes. And at the end of the day, or if they have to come back for gas. And where our buses will be repaired and worked on, and there'll be a fuel area in the back, furthest area away from any adjacent properties and dresser road. So we never had that. We've obviously been working with a third-party vendor that has been operating a facility, the old Long's Bus Company facility off of Pleasant Street. And it's, it's never been able to house many of these buses, and we're, we're working within a budget that doesn't permit us to house a lot of them. But we'll be able to house those that we're working on, for sure, rather than leaving them out like in a boneyard, and say, well, we'll get to it when we can, when they thaw out. But we'll be able to do that more methodically and more professionally. So that's all going to happen. It's about a $22 million project. It's entirely funded by federal sources right now. Much of it has been granted, not all of it has been allocated, and that's what we need to be able to launch. We have, when we go to bid, we will hopefully, hopefully have more information on that. When we, before we sign the contract, they're going to want to know, do you have the ability to complete this, this project with your funding? So the, the moment of truth will be sometime in April, late April, early May, probably. Okay. Anything, and also look for more buses that are wrapped. Not all of them will be wrapped, but what we're doing there is not just, it's not for cute purposes. As you know, we have a route that goes to Elburn. And for those that don't know, we do that regularly. We do it seven days a week, and our objective is to have a bus arrive for the first run at Elburn in the morning, as if the train was actually starting here in DeKalb, which it would if we had a couple hundred million dollars, and we were actually building that line. And then it's in sequence. And the same thing as people are dropped off at Elburn, and our buses, they're waiting for them to get on our bus and come back for the last 15 miles. And it's really ramped up the usage. So we're doing a couple thousand a week riders, whereas before we started doing all this, it was maybe 300, 400. That's, that's good. I don't know where that peak will be, but for now, it seems to be growing still, and that's good to know. Obviously, people who are not students or are not residents, they're paying. There's a, there's a fee that they pay. Let me just briefly talk about motor fuel tax fund. It's one of the big three that we use for our, our equipment and general capital purposes. It's all state fuel tax funds. We have a local fuel tax, which goes into the Fund 400, which is our general capital fund. But the MFT fund has very strict guidelines around it. We can use it for some things other than street maintenance. We purchase our road salt, we have electrical charges that we've assumed for quite a lot of our street lights. And we also have street, there are commodities and supplies that we need to keep the streets clean and in good, good shape, and that, that is something that we can also take out of this. But generally, the largest amount in any given year is for street maintenance. And in 2026, it's a million dollars from this fund in particular. We've talked about this, and then we've got another $750,000 from Fund 400, and then on top of that, we've got 1.4 million coming over from the general fund reserve. And that's our, that's our budget for the street maintenance this year. Questions? Special service areas, I want to thank Andy Rye, Public Works Director, for working with our, what we do with these monies is, we used to reimburse a lot of small contractors that would work, they'd be working in mostly residential subdivisions, where there might at one time have been an HOA, but that had faded, nobody knew who to contact, and weeds were growing in the cul-de-sac island, and the front entryways were looking ready, ratty, and who was going to take care of them. And neighbors did for a while, and then that fell away, so we took it on. But the, but the people who are living in those areas are paying in a very, very modest way that little extra tax that funds the services. From time to time, we spritz up, we maybe, every so many years, maybe we replace some plants and do some other things. And we've been managing these pretty closely, but they're covering, bless you, they're covering what we need. There are two larger HSAs. One of them is Market Square. This year, it's been about four years, but this year, we're going to go back and resurface the driving aisles. We don't have the ability, under the law, to do the parking areas, which are purely private. And even though these are private roads, they, they're paying for it, they pay us. We manage the contracts. Of the people go in and do the milling and resurfacing, and it's due. It's time, it gets a lot, they get a lot of wear and tear. And then Hunter Ridge Brook, we, four years ago, imposed that SSA with the cooperation of the ownership. They have done some things. There's still some work to do, but this can only be used on the outside, so it can be used for resurfaced parking, build corrals for the dumpsters. These things have been done. The parking's looking a little, little rough again. But the 25,000, we reduced, this is the only one we reduced, from 50 to 25, because we had a pretty good balance here, and we're looking to do some work this year in collaboration with the ownership. Can also include lights and cameras. Those are important things in those areas. We also have our TIP funds. We have a TIP 3, as you know, which is mostly the downtown business district, and then TIP 4, our newest, which this year, was the first year we accrued property tax, incremental property tax for that. We had enough to cover the Baxter, or excuse me, the Fairgram contract for doing some additional findings on the Protano site. And now that's before the IEP, the Illinois EPA, to see if we can get some grants to do a total cleanup, so that can be restored to private use again, which is our goal. Maybe 20 years ago, we just didn't have enough investment in it to get to that point. Any questions about the special use funds here? Debt service, if you go to page 203, you'll see a chart you've seen in a couple other ways in the last couple months. And I think this is mostly good news. The city of DeKalb has been living within its means, I think, in terms of going to the market and having to rely on others to pay our way on streets in particular, and other capital purposes. So we're, we're right now into the payouts for the first bond that we've done in a while, for actual construction. We've done some refunding bonds, but the bond for Fire Station 4 has cost us about a little over $400,000 a year. But we're coming out of a couple of other bonds, and as you can see here on page 203, by 2030, we're down to just the Station 4 bond payment. And that's dumping some obligations from the general fund, which are significant now, but won't be in four years. So I think that's good fiscal planning. Talked about capital. Let's talk a little bit about enterprise funds. We've got three of them. We've got water, and we've got our refuse move, and we've got the airport. And the water side has a major fund, the Water Operations Fund, has got two others, a construction fund and a capital fund. We've talked about our water system. We did a study with Baxter and Woodman that started almost a year and a half ago, and it was finally produced, the results were produced in the form of a report to the council back in April, and we looked at it again in May. You had a pretty lengthy executive summary to look at, and it's been timely, because we're looking at some new development in our community. And one of the things we wanted to know was, what's our capacity to meet pumping demands? And then what is the capacity of the aquifers where it all begins? Because they're not our aquifers, they're everybody's, who not only is in our town, but in many parts of the county and west of here. So we've, that's part of what the study was about. We're, we'll be talking about this more in a couple weeks, but... We're, we'll be talking about this more in a couple weeks, but we're looking at another data center, as you know, it's at the BURKS, and it, it doesn't use water for cooling, which is big, big in that, that business, so more to follow on that. And refuse fund is really kind of money in, money out.
Page number. Can you give us a page number?
Pardon?
Page number?
249.
Oh, yep, 249.
Just help us keep everyone focused.
Thank you.
Focus, yeah.
While I've interrupted you, I'll continue.
You've been doing this for a while.
Next year, the forecast is we'll actually have a little surplus on the refuse. Yes.
Some of that, though, is like money in, money out, so we're projecting, it depends on the cycle of things, that we get the bills for the end of December, or, yeah. On the whole, we, we do keep an administrative fee, which helps with our costs and internal costs, and the, we have a, we're in the second year of a five-year contract with the hauler right now, and on the whole, we're, we're pleased with the, with the work that we're getting. The airport fund, I, I want to say is, and that's, let's go backwards to 243. Again, thank Andy Rye for taking this under the wing of the, of the Public Works Department some years ago, and for the last three years, we've had a surplus, and we hadn't realized a surplus in the airport fund for many years before that. And this year, as you have probably noticed, we've put some new fencing up. We're, we're only part of the way, third of the way, maybe a quarter to a third of the way, done with that, but that's an important part of trying to get to the next threshold so we can land bigger planes. And we've, we've done a lot of repaving, concrete paving, supporting these corporate jets that you see in your picture of in your budget. The, the other thing is that maintenance is, is always a big part of any airport operation, and snow removal especially. What we can live with on our sidewalks, planes landing at, you know, whatever, 100 miles an hour, need to know that there's no ice there, so we have some pretty substantial changes happening this year in our snow removal equipment, and I'm happy for that. Federal government's been supportive of that, and happy that Andy and, and our airport manager have been focused on that. It's, it's producing for us. Internal service funds are, are, our insurance funds, workers' comp and liability is one fund, health insurance fund is another. There's a lot of good background here. Michelle Anderson and her team managed this for, for the city, on the health insurance side, for our employees, of course, and we're, we're solid with appropriate reserves. Then we go to pension funds. We spent a lot of time talking about them, but you can see the, the numbers. I want to thank Paul Calligan for pointing out, if you go way, way back to the manager's introductory work on page 21, we're going to get you a new fund balance chart. There's just a couple digits missing here, so I, we're, we're going to fix them up. The police and fire pension numbers need to be touched up. So, thank you, Paul, for that. Good eyes on. Public Library, it's shown as, as a arm of our, of our corporate services, and we, we help on the financial side, and their budget is replicated here for your review. This is the most recent budget that we got from them about a month ago, and obviously it includes their property tax levy on page 268. And what's left are a lot of policies and performance measures. I will direct your attention to those, those performance measures. One reason why, at the very beginning of this budget, you see a little award there, and it's, it's a little self-serving, I suppose, but on page Roman numeral 3, distinguished budget presentation award. We've been getting quite a, quite a number of these in a row, and part of the reason is, as, as it should be, the GFOA is looking each year for a little bit more in metrics and what you are looking for, and how you intend to evaluate your success in getting there, and what, what you're planning, and then what's your performance. And so, as you go through that, you can see we're, we're doing more to, to meet that expectation, and I thank Susan Homin, my shotgun here tonight, for, in particular, tracking those things and, and completing that section. If you go to page 305, you see the performance measures, and, and you can see a lot of snapshots that may be interesting to you as you talk to others about what the city does and how well they do it. That's it for me for now. Do you have questions?
Council. Finance Advisory Committee. Alderman Zada.
I'll just say, this performance measure section is awesome. Very impressed, and I know that your budgets have been incredible for years, but I appreciate what you all do.
Alderman Smith.
Again, Bill, thanks for the roads, especially those alleys. I know they've been retired of hearing from me about those, but we give John something to do this year, if he didn't have anything already to do, so thank you for that. Oh, one more.
Yeah.
Equipment, are we making headway? I, I've always, since I left, it's, equipment has always been...
We're making headway on the equipment side and the vehicle side. We are, truly are.
Keep fire out of it, they're doing pretty well, so. But I mean, like, Street Department, for example.
You know, the cost is still a big issue. We can buy a lot of squads for, for one dump truck, and...
Quarter million, I believe.
Yeah, but then we can buy several dump trucks for a, an engine or an ambulance, you know, so it's, it depends what...
I know.
And the prices are going up, and also, as we found with the engines that we looked at just recently, there are changes in the ownership of the companies that make these fancier, more, more complicated types of vehicles, and they're, they're owned, increasingly owned by people who have never turned a wrench, but they're, you know, they're buying and trading assets, and that's what the, the equity markets do, and, and so they're, they found a niche where these are always going to be in demand, but they're, they're pretty special, so not everybody can buy them, so they can, as the price goes up, there's more return for them. So, it, it is changing things. Is it going to bounce back? It might, that, that interest might go somewhere else, but for now, it's skewed the pricing, so in answer to your question, we've made up some ground, but then we hit this wall the last year or two, and, and our pace has slowed a little bit again, you know? We just can't afford all the things we'd like.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. I think we were in a slump, and we've done a great job of slowly knocking equipment down. I know that's, it's always kind of been in the back of my mind, so appreciate that.
Well, you're right on the roads thing, too. I, I mean, I, I hear all the time, and you see it on social media at times, where people are just, "The roads suck." But I'm telling you, I drive these streets all the time, and I drive around purposely. I'm on new roads a lot these days compared to five years ago, seven years ago. So, it's really, I, I've got to commend Council for always leaning in on, let's, let's make sure we keep accelerating as much as we can, our investment in our roads, because at some point, it's going to make an impact, and your alleys, Alderman Smith, I'm really excited about, because you got some ones that are, they're tough, they're tough. Alderman Verberk.
Just an unknown in the budget, the 250,000 we're earmarking for, celebrating 250. Do we have any more detail on that? Is there possible partnerships with other governing bodies, so we're not funding all of it? Still early, I know, but do we have any of that information?
Well, I can't say here's, you know, if I had a contract, I'd give it to you, you know, we do, but, yeah, we're, we're having conversations, and we may not spend a dime of that. Also, some of that, if it's capital, it has to be capital, and it has to have some kind of impact, direct or indirect, on further private redevelopment in the downtown area, but I could see, you know, if it was really special and this was going to be a destination piece, then, then we could probably at least have a good discussion about whether that could be funded from TIF. But otherwise, the 250 right now is, has no commitments, but everything that's going to come out of that is going to come back here, so we'll, we'll have to pick and choose, but we're the, I mean, no other governmental unit yet has stepped up and say, "Move aside, we've got 750, we're going to throw that in there," so that didn't happen. And so, it, it was a bold thing, it's a nice round number, maybe we don't spend it, maybe we spend half, I, I don't know. Ultimately, you'll be the judge of that.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Seeing heads shaking. All right, again, commend you all on the work that you did. Fantastic budget, great narrative. Thank you. All right, City Manager, you got everything you need?
I do.
Couple modifications here and there. We'll move forward with this sucker. All right. With that, I guess I would take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Verberk. I adjourn, and then you adjourn? Sure.
I was going to ask.
I, I'm going to do, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nae, same sign. All right, Council is adjourned.
It's your motion to adjourn. So, move. Thank you, the second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you. Very helpful.